Good.
Good evening.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We've got a large crowd this evening and a little bit of an agenda, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. And we will start with roll call with Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor LaBar.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Case.
I'm here.
Councilmember Connors.
Here.
Councilmember Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Ott. I believe he's just joined us remotely. Councilmember Ott, can you hear me?
He does not reflect online.
Okay, because he just joined in civic court. Okay, Councilmember Zuluaga.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening, we are going to start with a celebration and recognition of the Woodland Park High School Cheerleaders for their 3A state championship win.
That way you don't see our chair.
Please do.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for giving us this audience tonight. My name's Kevin Byrne. I'm the principal, proud principal of Woodland Park High School. This means so much to our school, and it means so much to your greater community to recognize the excellence that exists and which is being built at Woodland Park High School, especially over the last five years. The recipe for excellence in a championship mindset is easy to find anywhere you look. It's the ingredients that are hard to come by. Achieving at the highest level is hard. It's very hard. That's why so many groups and programs fail to reach their full potential. Over the last five years, we've been building a championship mindset necessary to actually achieve what everyone wants. Again, it's easy to want. It's hard to achieve. What we're doing, who we're hiring to make that happen, how we're going about putting the pieces together is not by accident. It is with intention, and it is paying dividends. What we're doing at Woodland Park High School is working, and the individuals who stand in front of you here tonight with me are evidence of that incredible work. Woodland Park High School is pushing toward that championship mindset and excellence in everything we do, in the classroom and out of the classroom. We've established four consecutive years of growth and improvement in our SAT scores, culminating last spring in the highest achievement scores, average achievement score in the history of the school. We've recently been recognized as one of the best high schools in Colorado by U.S. News &amp; World Report. For the first time in 20-plus years, our football team made it to state playoffs. For the first time in 20 years, our volleyball team made the state tournament. For the first time in 20 years, our boys' basketball team had a winning record last year. Both men's and women's cross-country teams qualified for the state championships. Our marching band has grown from five students, or excuse me, 15 students just four years ago to more than 50 next year. Our madrigal singers will be the featured high school performance group next month at the Colorado Music Educators Annual Learning Conference. A new school record for the lowest score at the state tournament was achieved by my high school golfer this year. Woodland Park High School forensics will again send a pair of competitors to national tournament this summer. And they have a great shot at returning with the first medal in the history of the program. Achieving excellence is hard. Many choose to leave this pathway along the way because it's hard. The girls you see in front of you did not leave because it was hard. They committed, they persevered, and they rose each and every day when these coaches demanded more from them than they knew they had. And they met the demands of a championship mindset. And last month, they returned to our school with the very first team championship in the history of the school. If I sound proud, you're right, I am. I'm very proud of what these girls represent for all of our programs and our academic improvements. I challenge you, don't listen to the naysayers about WPHS. I know there are some. I know there are a few fewer than when we got here five years ago. But those who want to tear us down, those who choose not to join in the excellence we're committed to achieving, some will continue to walk away. But many more are joining us because we have a championship mindset now. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Shayna Lampton. I'm the head coach for Woodland Park Cheer, and I'd like to introduce my assistant coach, Cheyenne Hellman, my other assistant coach, Tori Hartsock, and my volunteer, Raleigh Roy. So.
Yeah.
Bringing them in. Just a quick rundown. Cheyenne and I have been coaching for three years now, and so our first year was COVID. We achieved a third place, finished that state. Last year, we came in and we brought Tori in, and we achieved second place. So the minute state finished last year, Cheyenne and I looked at each other and like, we're getting first next year. So that has been our mindset the entire year. There was no other choice. What did I say when you guys tried out? What was the expectation? We're winning state, so if you want to be a part of it, come on in. It's gonna be hard work. So one thing that we added this year was we added a day of tumbling down in the springs at a tumbling gym. We did some summer conditioning. We did a specific stunt camp only for three days straight, right before the season started. We have all, these guys have been hitting the bricks since August 8th. Cheerleading is the longest and the most difficult season of all sports. So we are just now finishing in January, and then we have tryouts. So that has been kind of an overall of our season, and I can't ask for a better bunch of kids. They've been working on their grades. That's always first. And I can travel with these guys. We're heading to Dallas tomorrow to the NCAA Nationals, and we are going to try and win. So we have 28 other teams to try and beat, and we perform on Saturday and Sunday, and we're gonna take them and try to get some good scores. I appreciate the school system, the administration, the coaches, parents. Hey, I get the big-eyed parents at the beginning of the season going cheer, really? Like, and then they're, by the end of the season, they're like, yeah! So they get it. So thank you, parents, for coming and showing up all season. Seniors, step forward, please. So I have Kaylee Hill wave, Kaylee Michael, Morgan Gillespie, Mia Nicholsburg, Taylor Travis, and Sierra Mares. Talk about leadership. From these girls have been phenomenal, and we've had, don't start!
You're gonna make me cry.
So, thank you, and that's all I have to say, because this is gonna make me cry, so.
No, she's just.
All right, you guys are gonna do cheer for them. So let's do it. All right, I think next they're gonna show our road to state. This would be considered regionals in cheer, so this is our regionals performance to get to the state competition.
You're on TV, too. Who's that back there? The mayor has something she'd like to present to the girls and present to the coaches.
And on a side note, also, when you come into the city, we have a sign up off the highway that you can see, and we're going to be putting your sign up there that you are the state champions, so.
So we were asked by Mr. Costner to present the coaches with these. Do you want to say anything?
That is close to the thing. We also have the mayor's pin for everyone, so give me just one second to get them handed out. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And then maybe at the end, we can get a picture of you with the mayor. Hey, photo op. Kristin, however you think. Where's the mayor? And the last thing is, girls, can you show the council your plaque? The council has not seen it.
Congratulations, ladies. Thank you very much. That was awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Requested by Gessu.
I'm waiting for them to clear out. It's not so loud.
That was so cool.
Ready? All right, we're gonna move on to the, to 3C on the agenda, and we've got, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on B. I skipped ahead. 3B, and it's a thank you and appreciation to the Woodland Park Hockey Association, and our presenter is Cindy Keating.
Well, golly, that's kind of hard to follow, right? Oh, that's so exciting. I can't wait for them to come back from Nationals with their big trophy.
Good evening, and thank you for being here, or allowing us to be here today. I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize the Woodland Park Hockey Association and some of the great things that they've done for the city as well as our community. Our partnership with the Woodland Park Hockey Association started in 2009. For the past 14 years, the Hockey Association has donated time, man and woman power, and improvements to the Meadowwood Sports Complex rink, not just for our use or their use, but for the whole entire community. They have given over, no, they've given thousands of hours of rink maintenance time, including recruiting, training, and scheduling maintenance, volunteers, flooding with a hose. Imagine a little hose, 200 by 80-foot concrete service that they're flooding on, and you know, it has to be cold to make ice. And then also, they give us time driving to Zamboni, which helps maintain the ice. They help us when we paint the ice white for the reflection of the sun. They help us with the layout and installation of the hockey lines, so we can have lines on our rink. They also help us with snow removal, assisting with our shade system, and pretty much anything that we need assistance with at the rink, they're there to help us out. Not only do they help with our maintenance at the rink, but they also donate and cost-share purchases with the city to make our rink better. In 2011, they donated a scoreboard. In 2012, they donated Zamboni. Not a brand-new, but much lesser used than the one that we had. The one that we had before the donated Zamboni came from a junkyard in Pablo, but we had a Zamboni. In 2010, they installed electrical boxes to use for our warming huts, and we also cost-share those warming huts with the Hockey Association. In 2021, we experienced a windstorm that took down one of our light poles at the rink. The city and the Hockey Association shared the cost to replace those lights. And then most recently, in September of '22, Meadowwood Sports Complex once again experienced another windstorm, causing great damage to our rink, taking down all the northside boards. This damage made the rink unusable. We weren't sure what we're gonna do. We didn't think we would even be able to have ice this year. And the Hockey Association stepped up to the plate once again for our community and donated $7,500 for repairing those boards. These funds were raised a couple of years ago through a GoFundMe for rink improvements through the Hockey Association, and they decided that it would be a great investment to put those back into the rink this year. So the repairs were completed by mid-December, which allowed us to start making ice. And then with the dedication of our Hockey Association volunteers out there with those little hoses flooding the rink and our facilities crew, the rink was able to open on December 28th, which was actually only a couple of days later than what we normally do, but that's late start. We usually start making ice the first part of December, and so we didn't get to start doing that till the mid. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys understood that this, we have a great partnership with the Woodland Park Hockey Association and how much we appreciate everything they do at the rink for our programs, park and rink programs, their own programs, high school hockey, and then also just for our community open skate. So today, I know that there's some Hockey Association members here, but what I would like to do is introduce Landis Sebold to you. She's the president of the Hockey Association, and she is one of the founding members, still active with the association. Landis?
Hi there. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council, and Cindy for recognizing Woodland Park Hockey Association tonight. As Cindy mentioned, when we began in 2009, we had two purposes in mind. One, and this is in our mission statement, one is to grow the game of hockey in Teller County. Born and raised around hockey my whole life, my husband's the same way, and it's just something we've always been passionate about. So we've lived here for, my husband, about 24 years, me for 20, and when we discovered there was a rink there, we knew one day our kids would play there and that we would be involved. And so 13 years later, here we are. So our first mission was to just grow the game of hockey in Teller County. Our second mission is to raise funds for the maintenance and improvement of the rink at Meadowwood. Thanks to our very positive and productive relationship with Cindy and with her crew at Parks and Rec and Public Works and the support of the city, we've been able to grow the game in some really big ways. We started with 14 players, and this season we have 100. We have 38 mites who are ages eight and under, learning to skate out there at Meadowwood. We also have a new young lady who's offering skating lessons to the littlest of the littles, and that program is just growing leaps and bounds. She's out there every Saturday and Sunday morning teaching those little ones to skate. And so it's really just, we're really excited to have been able to give the money that we were able to support having an ice rink this season, just to really impact all the lives of those kids. More importantly than growing the game, though, is just being able to be responsible stewards of the money that we've raised from this community and from people who love the rink over the years, so that we could have the possibility of being involved in that rink repair. But it does take a lot of volunteers, and they come together every season to build and maintain the ice out there. Having the structure of the rink is a great privilege, and we're so very grateful to have the partnership with the city to be able to use the structure. But it's pretty useless without the hands of the people who come to make the ice every year. And so we have some people who make the ice for us here in the room tonight, and I just wanted to introduce them and recognize them as well. We have Travis Sebold, Janelle Walzer, and Justin Snyder with us tonight. They're back here in the back. Hey, yeah, come on, come on up. Justin, Janelle, and Travis. And these are all Zamboni drivers. They fled the ice. And we have a crew of about 12. Most of our Zamboni drivers and ice makers are also coaches and moms and dads and all the things. But we also have several members of our Woodland Park High School hockey team who also give back to our community by donating hours to build ice, and they stand out there with hoses and they patch holes, and they do it, too. So I would also like to recognize Weston McCorkle, Marin Kleppi, and Weston Sebold. And they're just a small representation of our high school hockey team that helps out there as well. Council members, we're just grateful to be able to partner with the city to make Meadowwood Ice Rink an awesome place for our community to enjoy, a safe place for our kids to call home, and a place that they believe in serving. So we look forward to supporting the continued improvements at the rink. It's just an awesome place. So thank you.
Yeah, I have some mayor's pins for all of you, and we really appreciate your ingenuity and hard work for this community. And speaking of it, I wish you all would run for council, because you get things done, so.
Before they head out, I was just wondering if council had any questions for the Hockey Association at all?
Council, any questions? Thank you very much.
Prediction on the Stanley Cup?
Yeah. Yeah, the Bruins are probably gonna take it, but we'll all be watching it, so. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to 3C, and that's keep Woodland Park's beautiful annual report and beautification award presentation, and we have several presenters for that. Oh, I see, we have Sarah for that.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Horward. I'm part of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee, and before I do the annual report, and Sarah, you know, puts up the presentation, I do want to start by giving the beautification award. As part of our committee, we always like to recognize individuals, businesses that take the time to put some TLC into their spaces, and today, we would want to recognize one of those businesses. And we have the owner here to present the award to. The Mayflower was the one that we, Mayflower Restaurant has put a lot of effort into beautifying their space, so we would want to recognize them today.
Very good. I'll bring it down for you, so that's all right?
Yeah.
We could probably get another picture.
By the way, it is noticeable the work you've put into it.
Do we happen to have a picture of the improvements?
Sarah, do you have a picture? We had one, okay.
Okay, so I already introduced myself. So today, we're gonna be reviewing our annual report, so pretty much basically what we've been doing this past year and what we hope to get accomplished is 2023. So 2022, we started off the year by kind of refreshing our look. We updated our logo, updated our website, all that admin stuff behind the scenes. We continue to maintain our Facebook presence and website, just to keep the community engaged and with posts. Earlier in the year 2022, we did also put up a survey to the community using the WhatsApp Woodland Park platform to gather ideas for beautification projects. As part of that, we did. As part of that, we did receive twenty-eight total ideas from the community and a hundred and thirteen votes on those ideas. We also continue to have our recycling pledge. On the website, and the recycling pledge is basically a way for us to gather partners within the community. To, that will pledge to reduce, reuse, recycle. And I believe, yeah, as you can see on the side, it. Also, if you see litter picking it up, so just trying to change the community mindset to. Yeah, reduce, reuse, recycle. And we also continue to, to run the Adopt a Spot and Adopt a Garden programs as part of our committee. She's so on it. This past year, we also went ahead and had a booth at several of the farmers markets. We, Claudia and Jeanette, they had educational materials, they had a lot of interesting. Information as part of the farmer's market. They had a hotspot map for where deer crossings are more likely. They had. Flower baskets with fake flowers to show the community, you know, because you. There's only a certain part of the year where you can have real flowers outside, but fake flowers you can have all year long, and they're beautiful. And they had some recycling material, volunteer information. And we hope to continue having a presence in the farmer's market this year. We also volunteered to help out with painting the Welcome to Woodland Park sign when you come from Dubai. This past year was our twentieth annual citywide cleanup. That's held by the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. We had over a hundred volunteers that showed up. This past year, we were able to not just cover the city streets. We also had enough volunteers to send to the creeks. Usually we have two separate cleanups, one that's the citywide cleanup, and then we participate in Creek Week, which is the statewide. Watershed cleanup each September, and since the, our August twenty-seventh date was so close to the Creek Week, we just combined them. And this year we are having our twenty-first annual citywide cleanup, and it is scheduled for June third, so everyone. In this room, mark your calendars, please. And hope to have an even better turnout this year. So some of our goals for twenty-two-three, besides, you know, continuing the same programs that we've had along twenty-two-two. So continuing to. Have the Adopt a Garden, Adopt a Spot, and looking for adoptees for those. For anyone interested, Adopt a Garden, they usually get the flowers around June, so it's. Perfect time to start thinking about if you want to adopt the garden. We would also like to continue recognizing those in our communities that take effort. To beautify their spaces like we did earlier, just five minutes ago. And using the suggestions that were provided by the community for beautification projects and looking into tackling some of those. The annual, also annual cleanup, Creek Week cleanup, there're gonna be two separate cleanups this year because we are moving the annual cleanup up to June. And then continuing community education efforts. We would like to update our bylaws, so you will definitely be hearing from us again throughout the year. Just so we can be more efficient and productive. In, in, in our meetings and, and just in how we're managed. Annual cleanup, mentioned. We want, we do need members. We do hope to recruit at least three new members into our committee. This year, so we've been thinking about just creative ways that we could. Get potential members interested. Identify new funding opportunities and hope to increase the participation of volunteers in all our different programs by continuing our outreach. And finally, we do have some recommendation, recommendations, we would like to recommend. For the city and committee to pursue grant funding opportunities for our different projects and campaigns. We would also like to recommend that the city adopt. Alternatives to the traditional flowers such as fake flowers or native bushes. And grasses for the adopting garden locations, just due to the low success rate that we've seen in previous years. We would also like to look into more committee collaboration with other groups like Main Street, Downtown Development Authority, just on different projects. Also looking for sponsorships and other businesses to collaborate for the annual cleanup. And we would also like to, your continued collaboration or consideration on pursuing beautification project, projects such as the median proposal that we did earlier. I guess twenty-two-two, and other efforts to beautify the community. We have a proposal that we've been working on for Woodland Park Scoops, and it's a campaign around dog poop, dog poop cleanup. That's a mouse wool. And finally, we would like to make a proposal today. For the support in pursuing a Highway sixty-seven improvement for speed and wildlife safety. So now I will. Ask Claudia, one of our other members, is gonna be taking it over and sharing with you her proposal.
Would, Claudia, what do you need?
We just need a table.
Oh, okay.
First, I'd like to preface how special it was and how proud I am to have seen all our youth. This is a real positive meeting, one of the most positive I've ever been at. We just have so much to be proud about with kids and hockey and cheerleaders. So it's pretty wonderful. I wanted to share that, that Jeanette Horwood did this beautiful model that we're gonna be looking at to kind of explain. Some of the features that we have as an idea for beautifying a highway. On sixty-seven, you know, basically our work and the Woodland Park Beautiful Committee is centered on projects like the beautifying gardens. Community cleanup and median enhancement. But there's another type of beauty that's paramount and has a huge impact on the community, and that's the highway safety. In our proposals for a specific corridor on Highway sixty-seven, we've considered the safety of drivers. Those using adjacent walkways by the road and wildlife. Though we're not highway engineers, through research, observations of mitigations in other parts of the state. And speaking with experts, we'd like to present a few economical safety measures that can make a huge impact. On the safety of motorists. We feel this is a strategic time with the projected installation. Of a traffic light at Tamarack Parkway to work with CDOT and addressing the multiple safety issues in this area. That align with the Colorado Strategic Highway Safety Plan's vision, mission, and goals. The original highway was designed at a time when Woodland Park was more rural. However, in the past few years, there's been tremendous growth. And it's projected to continue as one of the main corridors in Woodland Park. For the city golf course proceeding into town, Tamarack Parkway is access to the police station, the post office, the C C, CSCS school. The gym and the new small home development. Research Drive is access to the Teller County offices, the bus barn, and various spaces at the Stone Ridge Development. There's also land projected for development along the sixty-seven corridor as commercial. In addition, the streets on the east side include churches, apartments, and established neighborhoods which have primary access to Highway sixty-seven. So Jeanette Harvard again is our artist in residence. And she is going, she graciously created a little diorama to help you understand some of the points. That we'd like to bring out and really appreciate her work on this. So using the model, we're gonna take a journey. Down sixty-seven and identify both safety issues and solutions with respect to motorists. Bikers, pedestrians, and wildlife in this area. Safety issue, let's start at the golf course. Heading towards town, which is currently posted at forty-five miles per hour. Quickly changing to fifty miles per hour with cars often traveling at higher speeds curving towards the north, the south. The sightlines are limited on the curve. On Monday, we drove fifty miles an hour. And discovered that once the driver has a sightline around the corner. The driver has eight seconds to stop at Tamarack Parkway where CDOT's light is projected to be installed. Cars and buses could be clipped in this high dense transportation area. At thirty-five miles an hour, it will provide needed additional reaction time. In addition, there is existing danger on the right side of the curve. Where there is a hill that draws deer into this area, and there are three succulents, including willows. They forage very close to the road, and they are on that tilt, and line of sight does not appear until a car is passing the curve. Irres. This is an extremely dangerous situation for motorists and lethal for wildlife. Solutions, there are three. Solution one, capitalize unlimited sightlines to convince CDOT. To decrease the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour when approaching the curve. Solution two, install a flashing light at the appropriate area on the highway. Before the turn to warn of an upcoming traffic light on wildlife crossings. The current deer sign is not adequate. Solution three, install elk deer fencing on the curve area on both sides. To prevent deer and other wildlife from crossing the road. This is an area noted for dolphin fatalities. And the, the elk deer fencing that's been used in other parts of the state has been very effective. Now let's journey farther down the sixty-seven corridor past Research Drive to County Line Road. Safety issue, on the southwest corner of Research Drive, a Teller County Sheriff's Office employee. Shared deer are hit weekly crossing this intersection to get to this popular foraging area. Along the sixty-seven corridor, deer cross the highway to obtain a primary water source. From the multiple detention ponds and abundant foliage in the area. Unfortunately, the deer have trouble navigating the ditch, particularly fawns. At fifty miles an hour, carnage is continually seen on the road. Which is not only dangerous to cars, but highly disturbing to onlookers. It creates an irony, as this is considered a scenic highway, and Jeanette has some experience. She's gonna tell us something she saw on that. Though the sightlines are clear on this stretch, the high speeds create a major maneuver, maneuverability problem if a deer crosses the road. Or a motorist must fear for a car accessing the highway. There are also pedestrians and bicyclists crossing sixty-seven. And some with motorized or regular wheelchairs and other devices to aid mobility. To reiterate, this area was once highly rural, and the speed limits have not been adjusted to accommodate the needs of this rapidly developing. Highway corridor to prevent accidents. Solution one, keep lower speeds along the corridor. It makes no sense to have speed limits increased going out of town. From thirty-five miles an hour to fifty, just as motorists are heading into the curve. The light will help slow traffic, however, that's when it's red. Solution two, flashing lights with deer symbols placed strategically on the incoming and outgoing. Traffic directions with yellow line strips denoting deer crossing area painted on the highway. This has been installed on Highway twenty-five on the route from Colorado Springs to Denver. And is highly effective in catching motorists' attention. It is also a cost-effective solution. Solar could be considered a functional or conduit for, laid for electrical signals. Solution three, install low W beam highway guard rails on the east side. That are designed to catch the bumpers and channel the car to a safe stop. To safeguard hitting pedestrians on the sidewalk or crashing into a ditch. Solution four, mitigate the dishes, the ditches. That create challenges for deer to navigate and create visual obstruction for drivers. As the deer jump onto the road, this poses a potential hazard to drivers who may actually veer into the ditch to avoid hitting them. You know, several years ago, CDOT Representative Roger Graham came. And he and another representative, and they actually went out to that site and they concurred, they said it's a very dangerous site. So the mitigations we suggested support the vision, mission, and goals of the Colorado Strategic Highway Safety Plan. When looking specifically at the policy directive fourteen performance indicators. Their specific target goals and their policy directives for rural road traffic-related fatalities and injuries. These were not met statewide in two thousand twenty-one as shown in their highway safety graph, which you're gonna receive in the packet I give you. However, the target goals for two twenty-two-three are set for a fifteen percent reduction of traffic-related deaths and injuries. Hopefully with thoughtful mitigation on Highway twenty, or sixty-seven. Woodland Park can surpass the target goals in our area as we make this quarter safer. And speed reduction would probably be the one thing that would make the biggest difference. In closing, other communities of our state have tapped into on CDOT's resources. That incorporate the state's vision and mission such as. The Silverthorn Trembling Corridor on Highway nine with two major overpasses and extensive fencing over twelve miles. Currently, these mitigations are not feasible for our area on Highway twenty-four sixty-seven. Due to economics and time allotments needed for implementation. However, on Highway sixty-seven, we propose safety measures that are cost-efficient. And timely considering the rapid development in this area. Again, it's a strategic time to work with CDOT with the installation of the projected traffic light on Tamarack Parkway. So we just had some ideas on the plan of action. To capitalize on CDOT's installation of a light. For the reduction of speed, flashing lights, fencing and pavement painted lines denoting deer crossing areas. In terms of our city's role, if CDOT is limited on funding. A lot monies to mitigate safety measures on our own under CDOT specifications. For the welfare of our citizens and tourists, perhaps start with flashing lights and speed reduction. Address the immediacy of our situation as we're a scenic highway that services over forty thousand motorists. Support our chairperson on the PPA CG Committee to continue with an active voice. Representing our citizen stakeholders to facilitate projects in our area. And actually report back to our citizens the status and progress. And to enlist support of community members when needed. Woodland Park deserves its share of monies to mitigate as so many other communities across the state are installing and stealing progressive mitigations. And also with future projects pushed to include us in the statewide transportation improvement program. As our recommendation support performance and objectives and encompass a key rural transportation plan. Our goal is to prevent injury and safety lies to citizens and wildlife to keep Woodland Park truly beautiful. You know, I don't think I mentioned the fence, did I? Alrighty, any other thoughts? I know that was long, but this was a, is a proposal that we think makes a lot of sense. And many, many people in our community have concerns about that road because of the carnage and the. The potential for accidents and the speed limits are just way out of, out of line. In your packet, you have a picture of the solar lights. The lights make such a difference when they, the flashing to draw attention. We have a packet for each of you that will give to Suzanne.
Make sure they get it. Okay, council, did you have any questions or comments?
I was just asking Michael, I said, Michael, where's the light going? And you want to tell us what you, or Ben?
Yeah, sorry if there was any confusion, but there is no light going in at Tamarack Parkway. It's just D cell lanes. That are setting it up for the future expansion. But what I can say is a good thing that may address some of your concerns is the plans that CDOT is developing, because this is all CDOT right away. because this is all CDOT right away, just to be clear, this is not a city project. Um, but the ditches that you're referring to there, those are all going to be uh, boxed and coverted. So hopefully that mitigates some of the issues from sixty-seven up to Kelly's. And then maybe when you're speaking about engagement with the Icepeak Area Council of Governments, I was in that meeting this afternoon, and they're looking at developing uh, their next phase of their long-range transportation plan, which identifies the transportation improvement projects, and in order for a project to be eligible for funding, it needs to be identified in that plan. So I'll ask that question the next meeting if there's any mitigation measures that are being included in other areas throughout the region and um, if we engage with Department of Wildlife or how that process works.
Okay, thank you. Ladies, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very thoughtful and thorough and artistic, so. And thank you for the handouts. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I like the visual.
Hey, we're going to move on to item three D, and that's appointments to the Board of Review and to keep Woodland Park beautiful, and our presenter will be Suzanne for that.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, for consideration, we have three positions available on the Board of Review. As Council will recall, the last council meeting, we had four openings, and you appointed, reappointed Jeff Cahill, who was one of the incumbents. Again, this evening, I bring to you three more of the incumbents from the Board of Review that would like to be reappointed. With us this evening, we have Derek Carpenter, Mac McThicker, and Jeff Smith. They are all here in the audience, available for any questions that councilmen would like to ask them. So we'll start with Derek Carpenter first.
Yeah, and if you'll just come up to the podium and just let us know why you're interested in staying on, and maybe let the general public know a little bit about your history, that would be great.
Derek Carpenter, been a builder for um, well, over forty years. The reason I'm doing it is because I want to support David Burgess in the planning department.
Easy enough. Council, do you have any questions or comments for Derek?
I've never met you, but your application speaks uh, extensive experience in this area. So I look forward to being on the board.
Um, I'm curious to know, um, you want to support uh, David Burgess? Can you embellish on that?
David works with the builders, and he does a good job of supporting them. So he's very helpful, because we were have to work through him to her permits and inspections and that kind of thing, extremely helpful. And I've known him for, since he was in grade school.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Council, can I get a, um, let's go ahead and do, take one at a time. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to appoint Derek Carpenter to the Board of Review.
I'll second.
Council, you may vote.
And Suzanne, there's three vacancies, or are there more than three?
There's three.
There's just three.
Thank you, Council. Motion has passed unanimously.
Very good.
So next, um, let's see, next for appointment, we have Mac McThicker. Would you like to join us?
Mac, I know Council's familiar with you, but if you don't mind just letting us know why you're interested in staying on, and maybe let the general public know a little bit about your history, that would be great.
Good evening, I'm Mac McThicker. I've been on the Board of Review since its inception in November of twenty thirteen. And in that time, I've developed a good working relationship with the High Peak Regional Building Department, uh, particularly the two deputy directors there now, John Wilson and Jay Inhouse. And I'd like to bring the experience to the table that I had from six years ago. Uh, we go through a code cycle. We change most of the codes every six years. It's a quite involved process. It involves all fourteen books of the code, the International Code Council suite of books. And I feel I have the experience to help Woodland Park builders on this in a very productive and meaningful manner. Uh, every three years, we update the National Electrical Code and the International Plumbing Code, which is rubber stamped because they're dictated to us by the uh, the state. But this code cycle coming up incorporates some super major changes brought about by the state legislature passing a bill known as House Bill twenty-two dash thirteen sixty-two. I am very familiar with that. It's going to have major impact on the builders up here. And I want to bring my experience of building science technology to the table to help ease our builders into that as much as I can. Six years ago, I put together a training package. I did two training sessions right here in this room with the builders of the Woodland Park community, and I'm prepared to do that again for the twenty-twenty-one suite of codes that we're doing.
Very good. Council, questions or comments?
Hi, Mac. I appreciate your service and your extensive knowledge. I want to take your application to highlight something to the community that you know, but they may not. Um, your point number three says, one of your, what's your opinion of the three most pressing issues facing City Woodland Park? And you've touched on it, implementing the changes mandated by the state legislature, not only HB twenty-two thirteen sixty-two, but future bills uh, that you know are coming. So number one, we have got accustomed to thinking that mandates are law. Mandates are not law, and we saw it in during COVID that we were mandated to do things. And I'm concerned, as you face HB twenty-two thirteen sixty-two, that it's moving us into this Green New Deal. Well, I didn't buy into a Green New Deal for Woodland Park. And the state legislatures, if you read this language, are appointing a non-elected board to implement this for our state. And they're treating Woodland Park, and they're taking away Woodland Park's right to self-rule. That concerns me. I know you know the details. I know you know the code, proposed code changes. My, my, my challenge to you is to say no. And I know the implication of saying no, but some of this stuff, you know, we could talk about it. The window R factor, the altitude, the uh, R sixty and the ceiling. A number of things that they're imposing upon us, which are preposterous. They're not helping us with health and safety and better housing at all. So I would challenge you, as you face this, to not approach it with a sense of a mandate, but our constitutional rights and our city charter rights that uphold our ability to self-determine what's important to us. And I know you've got some constraints, but I look at this bill and I say, is it constitutional? Because it's taking away local control. Your comments?
Well, I can give you just one example. I follow the in International Energy Code Council Committee meetings. Probably the only person in Teller County that does. And uh, I provided some written input to them. I'm not part of that committee. And which I push back on this, just for an example, the ceiling R value went from R forty-seven, R forty-nine to R sixty, which there is no payback on it. And they are proposing for the twenty-twenty-four version to go back to R forty-nine. I've been in contact with John Wilson of High Peak Regional, who agrees with that. And as you know, we have a separate um, appendix in the regional building code. And I did some carve-outs six years ago, the only jurisdiction of their eight or nine jurisdictions that had carve-outs. And I'm going to push for some carve-outs again this time around. And it is my hope that we'll, you'll see R forty-nine in there applicable to Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Council, anything further? And can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to reappoint Mac McThicker to the Board of Review. Oh, okay. Ooh, you got, you got three or four.
Who's going to take that one? I don't, I can, I can do it.
Hey, Council, you may vote. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously.
I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Review, we appreciate the City Council giving us an eight-point-seven percent pay raise like we
Aren't we in that too, Mac?
Thank you for your leadership in this, Mac.
And next, we have Jeff Smith.
Hello, I'm Jeff Smith. Um, I want to be on the board again. Um, just like to, to uh, have a little pulse, feel the pulse of the community, the construction. I've been in it since uh, I graduated from Woodland Park High School in seventy-five, so been here a long time. I'm a commercial contractor. I've also got a roofing company. Uh, been on a Teller County Board of Review since nineteen eighty-three. Um, and on the planning commission for fifteen or sixteen years or two, so. I've got a little bit of experience and uh, think I can keep helping. And I really like working with Mac and Derek, so. And David was at one point my brother-in-law, so.
I support him too.
Council, any questions or comments?
Jeff, I've never met you and just got to know you a little bit better. I read your application, and you have a lot of uh, credentials in there. Could you elaborate, though, a little bit? Not, not much time, take a minute. You stated the three most pressing issues, where the energy code changes and codes changes to building types. Can you just give me a little bit of your thoughts about those three?
The, the energy code thing, um, it doesn't really help us. Um, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's the state plan, you know, do this. I'm kind of agreeing with them. I pretty much is going to say no. The uh, the building types, everybody needs to try and do something different, but you don't need to get so far out of, out of line. You know, this thing's been built for a lot of years, and there've been changes. There've been some good changes. There've been some bad changes. We weed those out after a while. Just, it's just common sense um, with building if you, if you approach it properly.
Thank you.
All right, Council, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Jeff Smith to be reappointed to Board of Review.
I'll second it. You go ahead.
You may vote, Council. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously. If I may, wait.
Sure, please.
Both of office, thank you. Can I have you three gentlemen join me up front, please? Please, you're right, gentlemen, please say hi in state vernacular. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Colorado, the charter and ordinances of the City of Woodland Park, and that I will faithfully support the beliefs of member of the Board of Review on which I'm about to enter. Congratulations, congratulations.
Gentlemen, thank you for your service.
And I appreciate you with all that money back, actually.
I'll have to sell pop bottles to afford you, man. Have to put a swing door for you in front, yeah. Lift the counter, walk and yell. Yeah. Got more pins?
The coveted city pin. Thanks, guys.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we have Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. As Ms. Horwood said, there's still about four openings or so on that committee. We have an application from Mary, I hope I'm saying it right, Mary Manca, who would like to apply for one of those openings. She's here with us this evening, and I'd like to invite her up to the podium to answer any questions Council may have. There she is, come on up.
Mary, just let us know a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in participating on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful.
Uh, my husband and I moved up to Woodland Park in uh, winter of two thousand nineteen, drawn here because of the, the beauty of Woodland Park. It's a beautiful community, a safe community. And uh, as a resident, I feel it is important for people to, to maintain and volunteer and help keep this community the same community that attracted by family.
Very good. Council, do you have questions or comments for Mary?
Mary, I have one for you. On your three, uh, your opinion, the three most pressing issues, one of them you have is ensuring developer adherence to city ordinances during development. My question is, that's really not in the scope of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful? So are you going to get frustrated that you can't have um, watchdog control over the developers?
I guess when you want my honest opinion, or you're
Please, yeah. Honesty is the best policy.
The radical or the just me?
Just, just let it go.
We have a beautiful park across the, the street. It's a natural wildland area. Draws a lot of um, community use, uh, but the developers also used it for a number of years as a trash dump. And as a resident using the area, I took offense to that. Um, so I know I can't on private property, but when developers choose to use city property as a dump, then I'll probably have a voice. I may get frustrated, yeah, but I may have a voice.
Well, you're working with a good team of gals, so you'll get your feet wet. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, anything further? And can I have a motion, please?
I'll move to appoint Mary Manca to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. Now, what's the like, what's the term on this? Do you have, do you know that?
I don't think there are terms.
Aren't they? It's until good behavior or something like that?
We need you, don't we? I'll second.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Council, you may vote. Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Mayor, if I may administer the.
Sure, certainly.
Congratulations, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
You got a quorum now. As the liaison to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, I just want to say this tips the scale to allowing them to have a quorum now. Yeah.
All right, very good. We're gonna move on to items four. We have additions, deletions, or correction to agenda. There are none. Item five, we have consent calendar with five A, approval of on-call engineering and land use development services contracts between City of Woodland Park, Basis Baseline, JR Engineering, and Wilson and Company. And Ben Schmidt is the presenter.
So.
For all of the. Yeah, yeah. Well, so with the consent calendar this evening, we can put them all together if you want, unless you have individual questions about specific topics.
Mayor, I don't have an individual question, but I would like to provide public comment on one of the things. But we can keep them all together as a vote.
Okay, that would be fine. And Councilmember Ott, are you online?
I'm on.
Okay, so if you have something you need to say, just speak up, because I honestly, I forget you're there. So you'll just, if you have something you'd like to say, just let me know, okay, David?
And, okay, thanks.
I'm in on one of them.
Okay, so, so when we get to those, Rusty and, and Robert, if you'll just give me a heads up and have your comments for them. So that way we can take them all together. So, all right, Ben, you're on.
All right, thank you. So this would be the annual renewal of the on-call contracts that we selected last year through our competitive RFQ process. This met the state requirements to be eligible for state and federal funding. But these were the engineering firms that have been doing work for us for this last year. But we set up the contract so that there was the option for the annual renewal if performance measures met for up to four years, so that we didn't have to go through the full RFQ process every single time. And it helps with continuity for capital projects.
This is year two in the contract, correct?
My.
This is year two in the contract.
Correct.
So Ben, something I'm seeing new in the contracts, maybe it's been there, I just haven't seen it before. There's now a disease policy limit. Can you explain why that's in there? Why we need to, why that has to be provided? Minimum insurance coverages? And there's now a five hundred thousand dollars disease policy limit. Hundred thousand disease each employee. I've just never seen that before and wondering, what are we covering?
These were the contracts that were reviewed for the last twenty twenty-two project that are, that our attorneys review. I can look at that and get back to you.
Okay, tell us.
I would say that the contractor ensures we don't. The contractor in the contract will provide that coverage. It's not us.
I, I understand, but my question is, what are we, what is that? And I haven't seen it before in a contract, and Jeff's gonna tell us.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look into it.
Get off easy, that's all.
I don't know your name.
Yeah, all right. You guys ready to move on to the next one then? Okay, Aaron, you're up.
Yeah, that's right. I have the statement of expenditures for November two thousand twenty-two.
Counsel, questions or comments on that one?
I have none.
All right, C, Kip.
Hey. C is the approval of a valve maintenance trailer and the amount of seventy-six, eight thousand dollars. This was a non-budgeted item. This helps us greatly improve our maintenance on our valves. We have experienced, I'll say numerous issues with our valves, because we can't maintain them right now with the current equipment that we have in driving situations with CDLs. So this is a little bit more of a portable unit that anybody can go out and use and operate.
Counsel, questions or comments on that one?
This is where I do have a comment.
The first thing I do want to do is I want to thank Michael and Kip. When I saw this one, a relatively large expenditure, seventy-six thousand dollars, one month after we finished the budgeting, I scratched my head and spoke to Michael about that. He, he addressed it and I'm very comfortable with that. And then he allowed me to interact with Kip directly. Thank you, your email, while you say you're not very good at emails, actually it was a very clear email, concise. And I'm speaking on your behalf now for, for this request. This is one of those, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. It was hard to try to get a quantitative number, the return on investment of spending seventy-six thousand dollars and not having a lot of debate about it going through the budget, budget cycle. But Kip's answer really addressed the amount of flexibility that it provides to his staff in terms of people being able to check valves. It's the ability to test more valves so that we are proactive in knowing when a water valve may fail before you discover it at failure. It, it was just a lot of things cumulative in your response that led me to believe this is a smart thing to do for the city. So I'm, I'm, I know we haven't had a lot of dialogue about it, counsel, it's an unbudgeted thing. But Kip has looked at this quite closely and I think in my heart, it's a very smart thing. So I'm speaking on your, on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. So Kip, I love your word pictures. And in your proposal, you, you talked about two guys spinning around on, on a pipe, right? So I'm, I'm trying to think to myself, well, you're really doing a disservice to the workout factor for your staff. Just want to say. But the second one is like, I would just love to see that on Facebook of your guys kind of struggling with a valve. So I then went online and I looked at what this machine does. It's pretty slick. It's pretty slick. So, and it's smart and it really looks like you'll have longer coffee breaks and, but actually get more work done. So, yeah. So if you want to do a meme of your guys versus the machine, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure, we can come up with something. We can come up with something. Thank you.
Okay, item D.
Item D. This is the contract for the, we call it the three R pump station, but the Dove project that was in the budget. This was the state mandate to meet disinfection requirements. This was put out to bid. We received four bids. They all ranged in, in values. This is the lowest bidder at one point, two nine million. For a pump station, the highest was just over one point six. We have used this contractor before in two thousand and ten. They built the Headworks building or added on to that building and it was a successful project. So we're comfortable with awarding this contract if counsel is.
All right, item E.
Item E, this is a contract for the sewer system, the sonar of the sewer system. I say in the staff reports, actually great timing with Ben's implementation of the asset management system. This company will actually go in and survey the collection system through the entire city. What they do is they GPS every manhole and then they send, they send sound waves of the sewer main. And depending on how many of those waves make it to the receiving device, they can tell what kind of blockage is in that vein. SIRS also approves of this technology to help us in our insurance claims. And we have a contract here for the seventy-five thousand dollars to do the entire city. And that same information will be dumped into the asset management system without us having to physically go out and do it. So it's actually great timing for this.
Any questions?
One general, one general question for the both of you. I saw in some of the contracts it had a rate schedule and some of them it did not. It says C, exhibit B rate schedule is, is there some reason that we don't have that or you don't need it?
Usually the only reason it wouldn't be included is if it didn't, if the rates didn't change. And there's contract language, I believe that if we can, we can look at renewing the contract or, or terminating the contract, the rate schedule changes by up to a certain percentage. If it exceeds normal increases for those engineering services.
Yes, my only ask would be that where it says there's a rate schedule, when you get to the finalized with it, just ask them if they can attach it.
Of course, yeah.
I'd also like to take this opportunity, since we're talking about unbudgeted expenses. This kind of lines, it goes in line. We had a significant pump failure on our North Wellfield Pump Station last week. We need to upgrade that pump, so I'll be coming back to you with an unbudgeted upgrade, if you will, because it's time to do that instead of replacing the same equipment. We need to, it needs to be replaced to meet our needs, but also needs to be upgraded for future. So and then also, Michael and I are having conversations with another Twin Lake share that hopefully we'll be bringing to you shortly.
Excellent preemptive strike.
All right, counsel, can I get a motion then?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second it.
Counsel, may you vote? Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for giving us such professional and informative presentations of those issues. And counsel, thanks for making this so easy this evening. And it's always easy because you guys do a really good job with your work, so thanks.
Well, some of that goes to Michael. I, I do want to pass that. Your responsiveness to the offline questions, so that we didn't take up a lot of time here, which you've asked us to do in the past, and then allowing us to have direct interaction instead of, you know, the game of post office. So thank you. It made things a whole lot easier and I got a lot more information than I would have in a public forum.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, for doing that. Works. All right, we're off to item six, and that's public comment on items not on the agenda. Yes, mayor, thank you. This evening, our first speaker is Jeremy Lyons.
Hey, good evening, Jeremy Lyons. I guess I assume I'll have about three minutes here. So I'm going to comment on the petition and short terminals here in, in Woodland Park. So I'm in a unique situation here, because I feel like I'm on both sides of the aisle of this. Now, I live just down the road from an Airbnb, from an Airbnb, which in my opinion, isn't managed that well. But so occasionally, I'll see some of the minor issues. While at the same time, I own a short-term rental that's right across the, right across the street from my house. Now, we rent that out when my parents aren't in town. So I think it's important to share that I see both sides for what they truly are. So to the nine hundred folks in Woodland Park that signed the petition, are you certain that you know what you're objecting to? Have you read ordinance fourteen thirty-one in its entirety? Because I think it's a pretty good document that's gonna hold folks accountable. When you sign the petition, were you aware that fourteen thirty-one lays out the repercussions of all the annoying things that violate city ordinances? See, I believe many of you were sold a bait and switch sales tactic. So I encourage you to read fourteen thirty-one for yourselves and then contact the city clerk and have your name removed from the petition once you have drawn your own conclusions as to how thorough fourteen thirty-one is actually written. See, I think some of you have been the victim of fear mongering. This story of an out-of-town corporate investor that's buying up three and four houses around your property, I'd like to know the name of that company. Silence. Because it's a made-up story. So I'd like to share one of my favorite, a famous quote here. One of my favorites by Abraham Lincoln, who stated, and I quote, "Everything that you see on the internet is true and fact-based." Folks, look, social media, certainly in this town, is not media. I was a paper boy in the fourth grade, so I've got an idea of what it takes for a small-town paper to keep its head above water. You need headlines. Now, I'm very grateful for the one free weekly newspaper here, but you have got to do some critical thinking and deductive reasoning for yourself. So since when does ten percent of the population get to decide what the other ninety percent of us have to do? Did you know that ten percent of the US population believes that the earth is flat? So does that mean that we should supply all of our schools with pancake globes to accommodate this theory? As a Colorado native that does not, believe it or not, have a no vacancy bumper sticker on my pickup, I take offense to some of my friends and my close family members that stay in my short-term rental. And those folks, great Americans being called strangers and transients that roam the streets, is that where we have lowered our argument to, to name-calling and scare tactics? I'm gonna end with this. A great mentor shared with me that if you continue to take the low road, you'll end up at the very bottom. If we continue to take the high road, one day, we're gonna end up on top of the mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Sikowsky. Mayor, if I may just explain something, I just hear a comment in the audience. I didn't skip anyone. It's just that the people that, I do them in order. Sure. And so the people that sign up online, they sign up before the people that come to the meeting.
Yeah.
And that's how I'm calling the individuals. I have a online signup sheet and then an in-person signup sheet.
Very good. Thank you. My name's Mary Sikowsky. I'm a Woodland Park resident. Speaking tonight, to piggyback on, on Jeremy here, speaking in reference to the effort of a certain group to repeal ordinance fourteen thirty-one. I've heard, also heard all about the scare tactics and misinformation that this group used to persuade our citizens to sign the petition. I would like to warn our Woodland Park citizens that if this succeeds, they are limiting themselves to the future choices they can make about their own home. And I'd like to present an example of that. In one of our communities, a military family relocated overseas for a couple of years. In fact, they're in Mr. Pinland's neighborhood. Since they love their home in Woodland Park and plan to return, they found a way to keep it as well as maintain it well by utilizing it as a short-term rental. They were responsible hosts and their guests were too. I've talked to their neighbors. The neighbors were aware of the home being used in a short-term rental capacity, but never had any problems. It helped this military family to be able to do this while they were serving our country and have the option to return back to their home afterwards, just like they left it. If this option was banned from their residential zone, they would have limited choices to keep their home to come back to and possibly might have had to sell it. Certainly would have required more work. And possibly might have had to sell it, um, certainly would have required more work, um, upon coming back home. So, um. Limiting in a short sighted way and, and these restrictions and supporting that, uh, if your circumstances change in the future. You've limited yourself. Uh, the group working toward a recall of ordinance fourteen thirty-one. Which is a very strong, good ordinance to promote accountability and good neighbor practices among short term rental hosts and guests. Have you used what if scare tactics to persuade people to sign the petition? What if our neighborhoods are overrun by these people? What if there are constant parties, bonfires and overcrowding? What if? But we know the answer to the what if because these guests have been staying at homes in our community for over a hundred years. These scenarios are rare and easily regulated by ordinance fourteen thirty-one. Short term rental homes in Woodland Park comprised of roughly five to seven percent of the residential homes available in our city. And that seems to be the natural balance, uh, within economic supply and demand here. I'm told that even when the moratorium was lifted, there were only a couple of new applications. Neighborhoods are not being overrun by short term rentals and certainly not by institutional investors with no stake in our community. It is a healthy mix of different types of residents conducive to the character of our city and owners who care. No one knows what is around the next corner and when life circumstances change and options are needed. Um, I would urge our city council to continue to support a system in which options are not restricted. In order to truly protect residential property rights in Woodland Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have, I think it's Rich or Rick Royals. Royal's, am I saying it correct? Is it Rick or Rich, sir? What do you like?
Rich.
Okay.
As you saw, I'm Richard Burles and my concern is about the water taps, how the city sells water taps. Last year, we were through May through September, we were under water restrictions. Uh, so we all know this. And, and during that period of time, city sold thirty water taps. So why is the citizens put on water restrictions and the city is selling water taps? That's my question. I don't know who, who that should go to.
Well, typically during public comment, I actually don't allow council to have back and forth. And what we'll do is, well, we can, um, have, um, you're welcome to contact Kip Wiley.
Okay.
And, and have that conversation with him. I'm sure he'd be happy to have that with you.
Okay, great. Uh, I can just call and set up an appointment for you.
Yeah, and, and actually, if you want, it is number ten on our agenda.
Yes.
So Kip might address it during number ten.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious why the citizens, citizens are put on, uh, water restrictions and we're selling.
Sure. I bet he'll address that for you.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Kitten Walker.
So wait for another time.
We have Tim Northrup. Okay. Set to start the clock. Yeah, you could start speaking and I'll start the clock. Tim, what was your last name, please?
Thank you. I didn't understand what she said. Appreciate that.
Didn't understand my New York accent?
Tim Northrup on Golden Court. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council and City Staff for your dedication and your work in the city. Really appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, I am here today to present to you a decision tree diagram that will show you the options. Of the issue of the short terminals and the end results. After reviewing these, if you see other options that are not shown here, would be glad to take a look at them. So appreciate your comments. As you can see on the graph, there are multiple paths and choices, but only two end results. When number one, an acceptable ordinance passed by the city council with input from the planning commission. Or number two, a citizens initiative where the citizens petition for their own ordinance. Press and send it to a vote in a special election. Following the red line would bring the easiest and quickest solution. Any other path would lead to one or more special elections, which would be an unnecessary burden of time. On the city staff and taxpayer money. This will take a long time. And if it came to that, we are confident that the citizens would petition and vote for the citizens' first ordinance in a special election. And why are we confident? We got our nine hundred and six signatures in nineteen working days during the holidays. Now, that was the challenge reaching the voters. It was not a challenge convincing them, showing them whether or not they're going to sign the petition. More than eighty-five percent of the people we talked to. In our neighborhood walks, sign the petition. Because we received such a favorable response, gaining adequate support for the citizens initiative is not only doable, but it's inevitable. Through this process, the powerful voice of our Woodland Park residents has become very clear. To prepare for a citizens initiative, we'll need about fifteen hundred signatures to safely get the measure on the ballot. And we'll have ninety days to do this with time to organize in advance. We will certainly get that many signatures, which will turn into votes and become a huge victory for Woodland Park neighborhoods and for the city. We have become the agent of change for the citizens. And by signing the petition, they are the ones who are requesting this. We are just here relating this information to you. You've probably heard that saying that politicians don't start a parade, politicians join a parade. Well, this parade has started. Actually, it's more of a train. It has left the station, it's picking up speed and it won't stop until it reaches its destination. We ask you to get on board in this train with the citizens of the city. Putting the citizens' first ordinance in place, maintaining the character of our neighborhoods in the city that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then finally, we have Arnie Sparnins.
Well, before you start my clock for the three minutes, um, is there going to be an update later on this, on the agenda? On ordinance fourteen thirty-two status, because I know that deadline passed and we haven't seen any information of that.
We, we can address that.
City managers report. Now you can start.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Arnie Sparnins and I live in the Sunny Glen neighborhood. Uh, throughout this process, the consistent message by residents about dedicated lodging businesses not belonging in residential districts. Was drowned out by an organized group of STR advocates. Yeah, now rather than just hearing from a closed circle of real estate investors, yeah, these are your actual neighbors. That are speaking out with supportive referendum petition. That is, that is the true benefit of reaching out door to door, neighbor to neighbor, you get citizen input. Yeah, we now call on each of you to act as representatives of your neighbors and community. This is really a unifying issue for the community, now just based on what you heard of those response rates. Yeah, so in, in preparation for the council discussion on the repeal of ordinance fourteen thirty-one. Initiating the next steps forward, I urge council to replay your discussion from the October sixth work session. It was respectful, well thought out and culminated in the right outcome representing the city's residents. Council examined what other communities are doing. They recognized that community character was the top concern raised in the community engagement process. And they acknowledged that even as we strive for vibrant downtown area, we are fundamentally a quiet bedroom community. In this work session, majority of the council identified the better path forward. Was to focus on what was really needed with STR legislation rather than getting lost in the weeds. Uh, first point of consensus was to support the right for folks to operate STR business in their primary resident. Residents, no dissent from anyone. The next point was to recognize that rather than arbitrary difficult administer caps by zoning district. The fundamental, fundamental concern was STR businesses and non-primary residences. Majority of the council at the time directed the city attorney to draft amendments to support this. That's what was prepared for the initial reading on October twentieth. So it was doable then, you can do it again, yeah. You know, sadly, what happened afterwards was the historical hype calling this a ban on STRs. It was not. There was never, there has never been a call to ban STRs. Hysteria also bought stories of how people who relied on extra income from their in-home businesses would lose their homes. They would not. The amendments fully recognized the rights for folks to earn extra STR income using their primary residence. There were threats that you cannot base legislation on a primary residence. When in fact, limiting STRs in residential districts to primary residence is the most widely established practice in the state of Colorado. And I'll, I'll give you a handout to that effect that, um. Is, is the documentation on that, but it is the most widely accepted practice for STR regulation in Colorado. So if we can all just catch our breath and go back to the rational thinking of the October sixth work session. These next steps forward are doable. They're reasonable. They're what your neighbors want. It's your opportunity to truly represent your constituency. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave you, I'll leave you a pile of these.
Mayor, um, Ms. Walker would like to speak now. She was signed up.
Sure.
Thank you. My time started?
Not yet.
I got, I deleted you. Sorry. Cause just, okay.
So if someone could give me a one minute warning and then a thirty second, that would be great. Um.
You need to start.
Okay, so First Corinthians eleven nineteen says that there must be division among us. For that is how the good is revealed and these last few months has have been very. I want to say chaotic, maybe that's not the volatile, how about volatile? And, uh, has really shown division amongst the council members amongst, obviously tonight amongst community members. But it's also showing the good, uh, because we are exercising our constitutional right. And, you know, in, in the governmental process and this is a good thing. So, um, I just wanted to draw that to, you know, our, everyone's attention. That we are doing what our constitution says is, um, allowable. And it's going to turn out well. So I'm just gonna, um. I'm just gonna finish in prayer and I don't need my whole three minutes. So Father, I just thank you that your word is true. First Corinthians eleven nineteen is being demonstrated here in Woodland Park. And we know that the outcome will be a blessing to this community in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Suzanne, do you have anyone online?
That is, that is it, mayor.
Okay. Off to seven. No unfinished business, no ordinances on initial postings for number eight. No public hearings for number nine. On to ten and that is new business and it's approved resolution of number eight ninety-eight establishing single family presidential water taps. Kip, you're up.
Uh, before you, resolution eight ninety-eight, this is, uh, we bring this to council every year. Uh, first of the year, that was established back in nineteen ninety-seven, uh, with the water tap management plan. This basically establishes how many taps we will sell and how we monitor our water resource. Uh, so every year I, I take, I sum up all of our water rights and what we have a right to use. Um, and then that is broken down into a population. Um, I then take the population served. Minus the population that this water will, um. I'll say feed, um, the amount of people it will supply. And then I take that difference and basically boil that all into. How many taps we have left with the water that we have available. Okay, um. The water tap management plan says, um, ten percent of the water tap planning number or nor more, no more than sixty. Okay, um, you'll see in front of you tonight, I'm recommending eighty. Eighty has been, uh, was the same number as last year. That's because, uh, Borrow Bank was also established at the same time, um, and that Borrow Bank does not exceed twenty taps. Okay, so sixty plus twenty, you have the eighty, uh, because our, uh, overall tap number left is just over a thousand. Uh, so we can still remain using the sixty. Um, and that's just with water we have available today. Uh, the city intends to develop more water as we grow. Um, and we have already applied for those, uh, conditional water rights. Uh, so those are out there, um, and we will drill additional wells as, as we need to. Okay. To answer the gentleman's question, why are we selling water taps when we're in water restrictions? It's a great question. Um, a lot of people ask that question because it's hard to decipher why we're selling taps or from restrictions. So. Um, I will say, we're always one year away from our next drought. Okay, we have to plan future years in advance. Uh, water restrictions only limit outdoor watering. Okay, so you can do whatever you want inside your house. It's the outdoor. Why do we limit outdoor watering is because. We have to augment eighty-five percent of that water that's used outside. Okay, and you're probably asking, well, how do you determine that? Um, and this is giving you the Cliff Notes version here. Uh, for three months out of the year, we say a hundred percent of the water used was actually indoor use only. So December, January and February. We're saying no one's watering grass, washing their cars, doing whatever they need to outside. It's all indoor water. So we take the average usage for those months. Um, unfortunately, February is one of them. It's the shortest month. Which doesn't work in our favor because, um, it's not a full month, if you will. Um, so. We limit outdoor watering because we have to augment so much more of that and our augmentation water is our most valuable water. Um, and that's what makes it legal for us to pump our local sources. Augmentation water is the water or trans mountain water comes from Twin Lakes, um, continental divided area. Um, in both the Colorado and the Arkansas River Basins. So that's why we, we try to limit outdoor watering to limit the amount of augmentation water we use. Um, and try to plan for future years. Everybody knows water is a hot topic right now, um, across the country. Um, Lake Mead, Lake Powell aren't looking so great. Um, there's a lot of questions in the air and what will happen. Um, however, um, we sold forty-eight taps last year. Uh, if you equate that to a population, that is about a hundred and twenty people. Um, if I were truly excellent at my job, I, I would be able to tell you that I can figure out how much water. Um, exactly, we're going to use year to year and how much water, uh, Mother Nature is going to bring us. If I could do that, it wouldn't be sitting. So, um, but from a water standing, water planning standpoint, we do our best. To use the information we have, um, and move forward. And, um. So I hope I answered the gentleman's question on why we're selling water taps and why we're in water restrictions. Um, we are looking at water very closely today. The utilities advisory committee will be analyzing. Uh, some things coming up as well, uh, with water restrictions. We already limit lawn sizes, all those kinds of things. But we're looking at even going further, to be honest. So, um, there's a lot out there, a lot of question marks that we just have to be prepared for. So before you, tonight is resolution eight ninety-eight, uh, establishing the single family water tap allotment as to eighty, the same as last year. And, uh, look for your approval. And if the gentleman's still here, I'm available after me.
Kip, this is a preliminary to the vote question, but, uh, do you have a farming background?
No, well, I mean, a little bit. Did I, did I bail hay when I was a kid? Yes.
I get the only crystal ball that there is in the farming community is the, uh, is the, um, farmer's almanac.
Do other council members not have it? Did you put it in the back of the resolution?
What page is it? I didn't.
Okay, Jeff has it, so it's got to be in there. Do you know what page it is? Okay, Jeff has it, so it's gotta be in there. Do you know what page it is, Jeff?
Oh, the very last. Well, Ms., uh, Ms. Mayor. I'll make a motion if it's, unless you guys need time to read it.
Okay, never mind, I scrolled too fast. It's there.
Good job, Kip.
Therefore, I move to propose resolution establishing single-family residential water tech allotment for twenty twenty-three in resolution. Eight ninety-eight, series twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, council. You may vote. Thank you, council. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, council, uh, nine minutes to nine. Are you all okay if we just move through council reports and not to a break?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, for mayor reports, I have none. Happy New Year, everyone. Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting, we spent a great deal of time in several meetings. Reviewing what was presented this evening by Logan Simpson for the master plan. Um, but I wanted to just let the council know and the community know that uh, Parks and Recs can, continues. And the Woodland Park Aquatic Center continues to perform amazingly. This is actually for November and December combined because we did not have a meeting in November. The recovery rate for November is fifty-two point one five percent. December is thirty-five point eight seven for total or an average year-to-date of fifty-two point six one percent recovery. Revenue compared to expenditures, which is remarkable. Uh, just from the history over a hundred and fifty years. It's, it's better than it's ever been. Um, they had daily passes sales year-to-date for the end of the year. For twenty twenty-two, eighteen hundred and sixty-seven compared to four hundred and fifty-seven in twenty twenty-one. For total sales of passes, the, the various ones of two thousand seventy-two versus six forty-seven and twenty-one. So that's outstanding. So they continue to do great work and I wanted to share that with you. Mayor, I'm gonna share that Outdoor Pike's Peak Initiative that we spoke of earlier. There's a listen-up. Um, on January twenty-third through the twenty-eighth. Um, to help identify priorities and strategies for recreation and conservation in the Pike's Peak region. So um, there's a flyer here has a QR code that you can register and you can be heard. Uh, Woodland Park is actually on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. In person, five to six thirty per PM, or you can watch it virtually seven to eight PM on the twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. Michael, is the Citizens Academy registration closed?
No, it is not. I was actually going to address that.
I'll let you do it.
Oh, why are you doing that? So now we have fourteen spots that have been taken, leaves eleven. I believe that closes um, this beginning of the second week of February. I think it's the eighth. Don't quote me on that, but you can access that appli- the twenty-fourth. I'm way off, my bad. February twenty-fourth, uh, it closes, um, you can get that application on the city's website. So please do sign up. It's a lot of fun. We could use a few more folks.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Councilmember Connors.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the eighth of February, where uh, the police chief is continuing our community engagement. It's at six o'clock at the police station, so I invite everybody to attend. It's a monthly event. All I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Nakai.
Well, Frank stole, Frank stole my comment. Um, otherwise I don't have one, other than you will let me know when you Advisory Committee gets together.
Councilmember Neil.
I have a complex DDA report. That we had a DDA meeting at uh, on January tenth, right here at seven thirty in the morning. And I'm gonna start off by uh, letting the public know that um, there was an issue. In posting the agenda for the meeting. It's supposed to be posted twenty-four hours in advance to the meeting. And by the time they got the technical glitch resolved, because we provided to the city and then the city does some posting. And it goes between the uh, chairman of the DDA and a member of the city staff. It did not get posted until eight oh nine AM. So technically, we were thirty-four minutes late in meeting the twenty-four hour. Prior to requirement. Um, there is a business owner that has raised the issue. It'll probably be up to him whether he wants to push that issue any further. Uh, we have reached out to the attorney to find out whether, um, what, what is our remediation steps? The worst-case scenario, I believe, is that the, while there were two votes taken. One, one regarding the payment of the admin and uh, our legal counsel. And the second motion was the adjournment uh, for the meeting. Those were the only two votes that were taken. There was discussion and some consensus on guidance to the attorney, and I'll talk about that in a second. Uh, so the worst-case scenario, as, as we discovered the timestamp when it was officially posted. If that uh, business owner wants to push it because it was thirty-four minutes late, we would simply have to revote on those, those items. Um, so I just want the citizens to know that there was a glitch. We were thirty-four minutes late in posting the agenda. With that said, the meeting did occur. Um, we, we started between five and ten minutes late because we had another glitch with the Zoom link. We could not get the Zoom link to unrecognized a requirement for a password, which did not exist. So the Zoom did not occur. The meeting was here, was open. Uh, we had attendees, but uh, we are working to resolve those things. The items that were discussed were really conversations that uh, the chairman and myself um, participated in. With the DDA's attorney regarding three things um, that were then presented to the DDA board. The first item had to do with the Tava Group's woodland station development. Um, language for um, how the contract should be structured. If they failed to meet any other performance standards. What they were offering as remediation if they missed a deadline in their proposed project, because there are four phases. Um, and the fourth phase is the most nebulous right now. So there's some potential. There would be some compensation back, uh, financial compensation, an additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And any undeveloped land uh, would be returned back to the city. So the, the, the DDA felt comfortable with that. So they gave authorization to the attorney to continue to work with the Tava Group. On the legal language to take the concept and put it into a legal document. No vote was taken. It was just, yeah, it sounds about right. Get it in the right technical so we can really evaluate it and then make an official vote. That was the first thing. The second thing had to do with the uh, Taylor Mountain Enterprise, where there was a um, question about. The TIF amount that, that was granted and whether it would include real property. Uh, it was felt that it was based on the language of the contract. I'm sorry, personal property. Yeah, good, good catch, personal property. Um, the TIF agreement clearly states it has to be real property. So um, Chairman Perry will reach out to that business owner and let him know that. The inclination is that the additional TIF will be uh, denied. Uh, and the last thing was a TIF application submitted by AJ's. Uh, because um, he's coming in after he's already done most of the work. But before the certificate of occupancy has been issued. Um, it's being favorably considered. There's gonna be some more dialogue, but the attorney was directed to draft language. So we have repeatable process that's fair and equitable. And all TIFs must be submitted prior to the certificate of occupancy. And that's to prevent anybody coming back after they've been in the building or in business for a year, two years. And then all of a sudden decide, hey, I wanna come back and ask for a TIF um, after the fact. So we set up some guidance for the attorney to go back and craft language. Again, no votes were taken. Um, but it was simply guidance to the attorney. He'll come back with legal language that future votes will be taken. So even though we missed the, the meeting by thirty-four minutes, there were no votes other than the two that I've identified. Um, which may have to be retaken. The invoice for the attorney and the payment to the admin. And um, a vote to adjourn the meeting. And that concludes my report. I'm sorry it's lengthy, but it was a, we've got a situation right now that we're trying to work through with this business owner. Thank you.
I uh, listened to your meeting and uh, a question I have, just as you go back to them officially. The Taylor uh, another mountain enterprise. Mountain Enterprise. I heard a lot of opinions from, from different uh, board members, but I didn't hear a legal opinion. And it seemed to me that's a pretty specific legal question.
The uh, DDA attorney did review what is in writing and did render a legal opinion. That it was limited to the um, um. Real property not per, it did not include the personal. He did give a legal opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ott.
He unmuted his mic. Councilmember Ott, do you have any comment this evening?
Maybe he'll pop back in. Councilmember Zulawaga.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think Councilmember Ott is speaking.
Uh, can you guys hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm on my work computer tonight, so um, it's not set up and it's giving me some issues here. Uh, so I don't have any, I don't have a report. Um, I was at work, so I was not able to attend that meeting on the ninth for the HPC. And I was wondering if, if Karen Schmanki had anything that she'd like to pass on from that meeting.
She is not here this evening. She's no longer.
Oh, she has left.
Oh, she has left.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
Great, thanks, Ms. Mayor. So um, we saw a great presentation by Keep Woodland Park, beautiful. Um, and my, I guess my, my uh, question I'd like to uh, ask you. Mayor, as you are the PPACG liaison now, and when I was listening to these ladies report, I'm thinking. What is the status of PPACG? We haven't really heard any reports yet on a, on a, you know, regular basis. So if we could kind of get some sense, it might help them, because I think they misunderstood. Like, for example, I don't know that there's a light happening down there and stuff like that.
Kelly actually did provide one PPACG meeting update, but she's actually been. Provided a couple, actually. Um, Ben updated us on the light. There is no light. There's an XL and DCL line, uh, lanes going in. With those improvements. Um, the last meeting that we had uh, last week was really just how, beginning the year. Lots of appointments for, board changes for the director, the vice chair. Um, and those positions on the board were voted on. Uh, appointments to committees were voted on. And there were several updates. Um, nothing really substantive for Woodland Park that I can report to you all. But um, it will start gearing up again now, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to make a report. Three of us did go to the uh, Pike's Peak Outdoor Recreation Alliance. And I just want to make a comment about that. None of us really knew what we were walking into, to be honest. It took about fifteen or twenty minutes for us to kind of get the rhythm of what uh, Jeff Moser had put together up on Cripple Creek. But I have to say, it, I'm pretty excited about what they're trying to do. It was the first time I've seen three cities with, well, I'm a, a, a good representation of each uh, council. Come together. Uh, we had Park and Rec there as well. And uh, there's a real effort to look at our region in terms of the recreation. The tourism, uh, what we offer as a region. And uh, really kind of defining what that looks like for each of our cities, what our needs are. And uh, I, I came away from it, I don't know how you other, the other two of you came away from. I came away with a, with a positive uh, perspective and hope. That even though I'm cynical about it coming down from the governor and a committee that he's created. Uh, I do think it's a need. It, there is a need to have this sort of regional look at what we're doing together. So um, I, I want to guard our territory in terms of our own self-determination. But I, I, I think it's heading in a, a good direction. And so somebody said earlier, there's gonna be a, a, a listening thing at uh, Ute Pass Cultural Center. On, what is it, the twenty-fifth or something? Catherine or, or Frank, did you have any other comments about it? No?
They will as we get going on, but I have the same concerns you do. I, but I don't want our taxpayer dollars for our city taxpayers to. End up putting a bill on something that we're not really versing. Going to a meeting and then taking half hour for the meeting to understand what they're doing.
I, I, I was totally impressed that, that Jeff bought so many of us, so many of us together at a, at a relatively short notice. Without a clear understanding of what we were coming to. That was, to me, that was the, the most amazing part of it. And I thought it was pulled off quite well, so.
Well, I have to apologize to Michael and to the council. I was going to that and told Michael I was attending. And when I started driving to Cripple Creek, I looked at my calendar to make sure where I was going. And it was at four and not six o'clock in the evening. So I was not there, unfortunately. But just to reiterate, it's January twenty, twenty-fifth, next Wednesday. At the Cultural, Cultural Center from five to six thirty in person. And then they will post a virtual linked recording of it from seven to eight. I think it may be just another virtual, a virtual in-person meeting. But anyway, in person, five to six thirty, virtual, seven to eight. And I can leave this out if anybody wants it.
Anything further?
I also have Citizens Academy, which both have QR codes.
Oh, oh, that was the last thing I wanted to talk about. I just wanted to say, anyone in this room, we don't normally have this many people. This is great. If you have not been to Citizens Academy, I would highly recommend it. You just learn so much more about what it takes to run the city and you get an opportunity to view all the different departments. Um, you get fed, uh, you look at the budgets, you gotta look at all sorts of things. So it's really, uh, it's a fun, engaging time. And if you, what is it, Mondays again? The Monday nights. So if you can allocate yourself some Monday nights, you'll learn a lot about the city and have fun doing it.
City Attorney.
Mayor, I have no report, but I wanted to mention to Councilmember Neil. Uh, and you may have talked with Mr. McCaskin about this. The couple of years ago, the Court of Appeals identified a cure procedure for open meetings law violations. And I can talk to you more about that afterwards. That may have been what the revoke uh, procedure that you were alluding to, Rusty described. But there is, there is a cure process that.
We believe there is a cure process. We have not gotten, we have sent the request to our attorney, Mr. McCaskin. We have not gotten his response back, so.
There's a preview.
Thank you.
City Manager.
All right, a few things. First of all, thank you to our snowplow crews for being out there quite a bit recently. Keeping the streets and sidewalks and everything looking very nice. We appreciate that. Um, we're, we're on a thin staff, so we appreciate folks' patience as we work through that. Um, and I think there will be more snow here in the coming days, so we, we appreciate your patience. Um, and yes, to, to Mayor Protem cases point on OPP, I can't remember exactly, but it is outdoor. Initiative. Um, in a nutshell, just to make real clear what it is. Um, the state is wanting to understand better from residents everywhere. In a nutshell, just to make real clear what it is, um, the state is wanting to understand better from residents everywhere. What do they want to see in terms of outdoor recreation and economic development and conservation, kind of at the intersection of all those things? And so there are a number of listening sessions all over the state. We are in one of these five regions. And so they are going around and hearing about, wha- what do you think? And so it's very important. Uh, we are our own region. We have our own considerations. Uh, we're a rural county with limited resources. So um, helping understand what that means for the folks up in Denver is very important, so we would encourage you to attend those however you can, whether in person on Wednes- next Wednesday or virtually. Uh, it's well worth your time if that's of interest to you. Um, it, it's been a little confusing while we get all the facts straight, so thanks for your patience once again. Um, yeah, absolutely. And then um, if our deputy city manager, city clerk could give us a quick update on the petition uh, against ordinance fourteen thirty-one.
I'll start with answering um, the first questions that, question that Mr. Sparnan's had. The moratorium, we did not receive a petition back for the moratorium, so the suspension has been lifted. So now the moratorium is back into effect, and that's ordinance fourteen thirty-two, to answer your question, sir. Regarding ordinance fourteen thirty-one and the repealing of that ordinance and the petition, we are very close to concluding um, the verification process. I have a great team of staff. Um, I'd like to acknowledge Sarah Minton in the back, Grace Johnson, Kelly Simkins, who's in utilities, and Amy Jacob, our HR person who've assisted me in the process. Um, it was a lo- it's a long tedious process. They've taken, we've taken the nine hundred and six names. We've put them into a spreadsheet, so that's the first thing. The data entry of every name, every address into the spreadsheet. Second thing we do is that we look on my voter list that I have from the last election and see if they're a voter. Then they get checked off, they're verified. Then um, Kelly Simkins has looked at all nine hundred and six signatures and signers to see if they're residents of this, in the city of Woodland Park. She knows every single street inside and out, and she can just go bam, 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 write down the list. So she verifies whether they're in the city, whether they're not in the city. If they're not in the city, out they go. They're in the city, they continue. If we can't find them on my voter regist- registration list, then I go to the Secretary of State's registration list. And I go through every single signature, and so we're almost concluded with the process. My hope and goal is I'll have a determination by Monday for um, the petitioners and the way the process will work is I will write the petitioners um, a certification. If, if the petition is successful, they'll be the first um, to know the news, and then we may do, I don't know if we'll do a press release or what we'll do. But um, the petitioners will be notified first as to whether the petition was successful or not. Then there's this, a little bit of a protest period that we have to wait where um, petition, other petitioners or other public can protest um, my petition process. They could uh, protest a disqualified signature. They could protest a signature that I've accepted. They can pretty much protest whatever, pretty much for the petition. So there, there's a little bit of a time that they have for that process. So the whole time, the petition was submitted to the clerk's office on December twenty-seventh. The clerk has till January twenty-seventh to certify the petition, and then the protesters have ten days after that. So when we complete all of that, then we will be bringing it to council, council if the petition is successful. And that, the goal of us, of us, the city is to bring it to council on February sixteenth. That is when the protest period will be over and council then will be able to, it'll be on your agenda. And council then will have the decision before them, if the petition is successful, to repeal the petition, repeal the ordinance or to set it for an election. And so that's where we stand right now. Any questions?
Only one. So if you get this uh, certified by, say, Monday, is a, a protest period start Monday, or does it go on past what your deadline date was?
Current with the December twenty-seventh, the January twenty-seventh, December twenty-seventh concurrent with that. So it's forty days from the day I received the petition.
Okay.
So from December twenty-seventh, forty days is the protest. They run concurrent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the last item I would mention is going back to PPACG and your point. Partnering with PPACG, Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments, and as well as the Colorado Municipal League is probably more important now than um, at any point in my local government career. It's a lot of legislation in Denver being considered that impacts local government and local control. And so we are paying close attention on the staff side. We are working with PPACG on a couple other items unrelated to the legislature um, around economic development, and then also grants, regional grants, uh, work like that. And so um, we're, we, we on our side are increasing that partnership. We're very much dialed in with them. I'm looking at how we might bolster that in the future too. So it's, it's, it's a cogent point to make, so thank you. That's all I got.
Very good. Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.